Good evening. Welcome to the May 13th meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Education. Marva Collins makes this statement about the power of education. She says, "Once children learn how to learn, nothing is going to narrow their mind. The essence of teaching is to make learning contagious, to have one idea spark another." Please join us now for our traditional moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father and the United States of America, and to the Lord God, who we stand in our nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Board Member Gail Logan-Strange will now read the District Vision Statement.
All Jefferson County Public School students graduate prepared, empowered, and inspired to reach their full potential and contribute as thoughtful, responsible citizens of our diverse, shared world.
Thank you, Board Member Strange. At this time, Chief Carolyn Callahan will come to present tonight's recognitions.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. As we all know, great things happen every day inside every JCPS school, and recognitions are one way to highlight that incredible work. We start tonight with Tim Jones, a dedicated library media specialist at J.F. Kennedy Elementary School. Tim was named the 2025 School Librarian of the Year by the School Library Journal. Tim's exceptional work showcases the transformative role librarians play in enhancing student learning and fostering academic success. He has been working in school libraries for 18 years, but we have a fun fact. He once dreamed of making it big as a comedy writer, and he studied at the Second City in Chicago, which is one of the most iconic institutions in America for comedy. Notable alumni include Bill Murray, Gilda Radner, Tina Fey, Steve Carell, and our own, Tim Jones, right here. So congratulations, Tim. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate all of your work. Next, tonight, we honor two JCPS schools that came away from the Student Technology Leadership Program State Championship in April as project champions. Camerar captured the middle school division, and Fairdale won the high school division. Sixty-seven JCPS schools presented projects with dozens of winners across multiple competition categories. The STLP competition is the technology equivalent to the Sweet 16 in basketball, and these accomplishments highlight JCPS's leadership and innovation fostering student creativity and technical skills district-wide. Huge congratulations to our students at Camerar Middle School and Fairdale High School. Great work. Great job. Congratulations. Continuing with our recognitions tonight, we have Butler Traditional High School student, Jorge Batista, who has been selected as a Gates Scholar out of more than 35,000 applicants. It is so impressive. Only 300 students, that's less than 1% of the 35,000 who apply nationwide, are chosen for this incredible honor. This is a reflection of his exceptional academic performance, leadership, resilience, and dedication to making a meaningful impact. Congratulations, Jorge. We are so proud of you. Next, tonight, we are honoring Doss High School Spanish teacher Juriani Betia, one of 12 winners nationwide in the 2025 Disney Imagination Campus Teacher Celebration. She earned this recognition for her dedication to inspiring students every day. She said that when she hears Disney, she thinks of magic and adventure and fun, and that's what she tries to convey in her classes. She believes in her students and encourages them every day to know how important they are to her. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. And then finally, for recognitions tonight, we honor 33 Hawthorne Elementary Spanish Immersion Magnet students. Come on up here. They proudly represented JCPS at the Kentucky World Language Association Student Showcase in April, and they earned all kinds of awards, folks. They earned awards in timed writing and speaking across heritage and non-heritage categories, as well as in visual arts, and their achievements are a testament to their dedication and the strength of the school's language immersion programs. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. Great work to these, to our 33 Hawthorne Elementary Spanish Immersion students. We love it. Great job. Thank you so much for having me tonight. That completes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you, Chief Callahan. One more time, let's hear it for all of our young people who are accomplishing great things, and even our adults who are making us very proud. Is there a motion to receive the recognitions? Mr. Bass, seconded by Ms. Strange, all in favor? Eyes have it. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Lister, all in favor? Eyes have it. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 24th and April 29th meeting? Mr. Bass, seconded by Ms. Lister, all in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you. We'll pause for just a moment to let our guest exit, then we will continue. Okay, it is my pleasure to introduce our superintendent, Dr. Marty Polio, for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shul. Board members are bringing the superintendent report for May 13th. I will be briefed today, knowing that we've got some work to do today. I think at least three or four different topics will be on tonight. So, as this is the last board meeting of the 2425 academic year, I wanted to bring thanks to the incredible work of the JCPS family. And in complete candor, this has probably been one of the most successful years that I have had in my eight years as superintendent in JCPS. Other than the absolute worst weather that we have ever had in those eight years, which was this year, I know Rob's over there shaking his head, we had a lot of 4:30 a.m. calls about the weather, and that was difficult, but outside of that, it's just been an incredible year. I believe we've made more progress academically than at any other time, including the achievement of our literacy, advancement of our literacy and numeracy plans, progress on journey to success. You're going to hear some about that tonight. Continued improvements of Academies of Louisville and Explore Pathways. We've seen improvements in culture and climate with the growth of the Jefferson County Police Department, improved safety number data in our schools, and, as I shared last time, improved comprehensive school survey data around sense of belonging. So I truly believe this district is on the right path to record student growth like we have never seen before in the years to come. I've now been in JCPS for nearly 5,000 instructional days. I did the math when I was doing this, 5,000 instructional days, and I have eight more to go, which is very bittersweet. I do look forward to closing out this year with the big things that we always get to celebrate from the Employee Scholarship Big Check Day, when we go around and give big scholarship checks to surprise kids, our Lighthouse Awards, and then obviously commencement ceremonies that you will all take place in, which is just an awesome experience. To see the culmination of 13 years of work of our JCPS students and the hard work that our students and staff have put in. So, I want to take this time to thank every JCPS employee for their hard work and commitment to the students and community this year. As I've said before, I've been in every JCPS school a multitude of times, and I don't know how many else can say, how many other people can say that, and I'm completely confident, completely, that there's not a better collection of talented educators who are working to meet the needs of the children in this community than what happens here in JCPS. So thank you to JCPS teachers, administrators, bus drivers, classified staff, all central office role groups, and any of those others that I've missed for their hard work and commitment during the 2425 school year. You may not know how much right now you've meant to the children in our schools, but you have changed the trajectory of lives through your work this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Polio, and allow me to say, since the cat is out of the bag, congratulations on being named, sir, as president of Ivy Tech Community College.
Thank you.
And all the places you can go from JCPS.
That's right.
You prove that JCPS.
Finish Monday, or finish Monday here and start on a Tuesday there.
Tell Ivy Tech that they have just a few years with you, and then you'll be moving on to Harvard. So you heard it here first, that the future is bright. Now for our superintendent search process update. I'm pleased to provide the following updates regarding the ongoing superintendent search process. On May 5th and 6th, the board and the screening committee met at the Muhammad Ali Center to interview the finalists, the sixth finalist. After the conclusion of the interviews, the board voted in open session to name Mr. Ben Shuldiner and Dr. H. Brian Yearwood as finalists. The board will conduct final interviews with each finalist on Monday, May 19th, beginning at 9:30 a.m. at the Center for Professional Learning. Finalist one will interview from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m., and finalist two will interview from 1 p.m. to 3 p.m. These interviews will be in closed session, and they will be in conjunction with the superintendent's screening committee that we have worked collaboratively with up until this point. The superintendent's search advisory committee will meet with each finalist on the afternoon of Tuesday, May 20th, from 1 p.m. to 3 p.m. at the JCPS Center for Professional Learning. It is located at 3903 Atkinson Square Drive. Community members and JCPS staff will have the opportunity to ask questions of the finalists at the following places and times on Tuesday, May 20th. The first place is the JCPS Center for Professional Learning. The times are from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. The second location is Stouffer Elementary School. The times are 7 p.m. to 9 p.m. Community members and JCPS staff will also have the opportunity to leave feedback on the finalists using a QR code that will be provided at the community forums and through JCPS social media channels. The board anticipates meeting at 5 p.m. on Thursday, May 22nd, for final deliberations and selection of the next superintendent. So, board, please reserve on your calendars, May 22nd, Thursday, May 22nd, 5 p.m. for our final deliberations and selection of the next superintendent. Okay. At this time, Board Member Duncan will serve as the board facilitator for our student-focused, student outcomes-focused governance update.
Thank you, Dr. Shul. Our monitoring session tonight is really a conversation about how our fourth, seventh, and 10th graders are doing and completing the milestone exhibitions that they are, have been expected to do or tasked to do this year. We are planning, I guess, one a year, and so we want to hear how they're doing in reaching the goal of everyone hitting one, at least one milestone exhibition a year. So Tara, turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, guys, and good evening. We're excited to present on interim goals 1.3, 2.3, and 3.3, as we have worked to fulfill the requirements of the goals and guardrails, and the milestones are one of those interim checkpoints before the defensive learning at fifth, eighth, and 12th. So we know that students learn best when there is vibrant learning, where there is success skills that enhance their readiness for college, and reflection, informative assessment, and these milestones serve as that. We also know that students need to demonstrate and show their learning in multiple ways, through multiple mediums, and we want to create those opportunities for students to do that. So in the journey to success, the milestones are really part of that learning framework to empower both teachers and students to value authentic assessment, create rich classroom experiences, and showcase learning. So in order to operationalize this work, instead of having it done in pockets across JCPS, we know that in order to allow for equitable access, we have to ensure that there are systems created. So our schools for the milestones were able to have student-led conferences where the student would join their parent at the conferences and be able to present on their learning with them. They had exhibitions of learning where families were invited to exhibition nights at their schools, where the students could show what they learned in engineering, or what they did in English, or what they did in math. We also allowed for mini defenses where students could do one success skill or two success skills at a smaller time to allow them to practice those skills before they presented their defensive learning. So the milestones are really truly a checkpoint along the way. Instead of all of this work being encompassed at fifth, eighth, and 12th, it is now encompassed at kindergarten through fourth, sixth through seventh, and ninth through 11th, in order to make sure we're really progressing along that journey to success. So I will turn it over to Dr. Jessica Rosenthal to talk about some metrics.
So this year in the Schools Division, we've been really excited to embrace this opportunity to celebrate our students' learning journey through the milestones and not just through the defenses, as Dr. Greenwell just explained. The data that you see before you is representative of what our students have done this year in the fourth grade, seventh grade, and in the 10th grade with their milestones. So each school, grade level, teacher, or student will identify a milestone. As Dr. Greenwell just explained, there's three different options: the exhibition of learning, the student-led conferences, or a mini-defense. As you can see from our data here, the exhibition of learning has been the most popular milestone. That's really exciting, because that means that students are getting the chance to show their learning to other students, to staff members, to families, and even community partners. After a student completes a milestone, this, the school will enter the milestone into our Journey to Success student platform. So the data you see doesn't just represent the milestones completed, it represents the milestones that have been entered into that platform. And as the last few days of school are continuing, we expect students to continue to complete milestones and that number to continue to go up towards the end of the year. This data also reflects this first year of the milestones being part of our school-level vital signs. So schools and zones are figuring out processes and systems for monitoring the completion of milestones and the entering of milestones into the student platform. We're really excited about this opportunity. I'm happy that you're going to get to hear from some people in a few minutes that are at the school level, and they will be able to talk about what this data actually represents in terms of the student experience.
And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Speaks.
Yes, so with the Journey to Success milestones, we've had some really effective strategies in order to be able to keep this work moving within all the schools. We've been able to integrate Journey to Success milestones to be a part of the regular instruction. This is not a separate thing. This is something that happens out of what students were already doing anyway, and making this become a part of something that happens on a regular basis. We've also been able to have shared ownership of student learning and student growth in classrooms. Students are able to discuss their learning on their own, and it's not just the teacher saying this is how the student is doing, the student is being self-reflective about how they're doing and how they made it from point A to point B, what they've learned along the way, and what they, what they still continue to need to learn. Also, in thinking through our ML population and our ECE students, we've also been able to incorporate many accommodations and strategies, scaffolds, for them to be able to make sure that they also are participating with milestones as well. We've also had more interdisciplinary teams working together in order to make sure that student success is a part of every classroom, no matter if we are thinking about special area classrooms, or we're thinking about some of the, the classrooms that didn't necessarily focus on defenses of learning before. They're now able to showcase a lot of those artifacts and the meaningful learning that is happening across the board in many of the classrooms. So those were some of the things that are, that we're seeing that are effective and helping us to operationalize the work with milestones. We also have some opportunities for growth, though, in thinking through what we're doing as far as exhibitions of learning, we see that that is the most common milestone that we're seeing across the board. And so while we are grateful for that, and we see that families are able to come in and see what students are able to do, community members are able to come in as well, we know that additional support is needed for student-led conferences and for many defenses. And so creating resources and helping schools with support in order for them to be able to operationalize those two forms of milestones as well. And then also providing a structured timeline to schools and thinking through, how do they get these completed? How do we make sure that every student has at least one opportunity to have a milestone in those grade levels that are not completing defenses of learning? Thinking through also challenges with our digital platform and making sure that it is easy to use, making sure that we can facilitate effective monitoring through that platform. And then, lastly, we want to provide additional training to schools for, to make sure that as we're onboarding new staff, or as we're just getting more acclimated to ensuring that milestones are occurring, that we provide the training that is necessary to have full-scale implementation as we move forward. So our next steps are to work on our digital platform so that it's ready for 2526 school year, so the students can upload artifacts, tag artifacts, and make sure that that process is easy for students, and so that we can get the data that we want as far as what students are able to do. Also, we want to make sure that we have additional professional learning, that opportunities that are happening for students, for schools, for teachers, for whatever stakeholders need that professional learning, so that we can make sure that everyone has a good understanding of what Journey to Success is and how to make this as successful as possible for all students. And then lastly, we want to provide opportunities for our school leaders and for our Journey to Success leads to calibrate with other schools that are having successes, so that they can also replicate that success within their schools as well. We have with us tonight Principal of Grace James Academy of Excellence, and she's going to share with us how they have operationalized milestones within their school.
Good evening, everyone. So, just to go back to the Journey to Success and how we were able to make that fit into the Grace James mission and vision, it was kind of a natural fit, because we told kids that from the day one, we wanted them to have voice choice and agency. And so this platform allows for us to give them that voice choice and agency. As far as student-led conferences, so I'll kind of go through some of the things that we've been able to get off the ground running at Grace James and how it has worked. Student-led conferences, we began from day one, because we believe that students should be a part of their learning. We can't go on a journey if we don't take the person who is a part of the journey alongside with us. And so they have to be able to speak to what's going on and make a plan with their family on how we're going to either improve or continue to enrich where we currently are. The exhibitions of learning really fit in well with our Afrocentric themes and units, and so at the end, we have four different themes that we go through, and at the end of all of those, we have them exhibit their learning. We just culminated with an activity on, yesterday, it seems so far away, but yesterday, on Tuesday, where we had our community members come in, and they were able to hear from our students about their learning, and they talked to them and led them through the discussion. Just to kind of sum everything up, we want kids to own their learning in the way that they own their learning best. And so this takes it beyond paper and pencil, beyond multiple choice. It gives them an opportunity to showcase how brilliant they are in a variety of ways. The Explore program has also been a benefit for us as well. That engineering design process that we use is a process that's not only limited into our two Explore classes, but also trickles into the other spaces within our building, so that students have an opportunity to test out their ideas, they have an opportunity to collaborate with others, and be able to showcase their understanding. So we still have areas, of course, it's still fairly new, so we're still growing as well. We're looking at more ways to become interdisciplinary, but these are some of the things that we have done that have given success at Grace James Academy.
And I'd also like to introduce the heart of this, the teacher, and this is Stephanie Maynard. She is from Norton Elementary, and I'd like her to tell a little bit about her story and journey to success.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for the chance to be here and share my experiences as a teacher with you. After 17 years of teaching, I decided this year was going to be the year I jumped into student-led conferences, and I was lucky enough to have a team that was like, well, okay, we'll do it with you. And so we did it for our Winter Conference Day, and I will admit, I was very skeptical, I think skeptical and worried that the parents and the kids just, we wouldn't have the buy-in, and we wouldn't be giving them what they expected. And I am just so proud to sit here and say how wrong I was to be skeptical or to be worried. So it went much better than I ever expected. We spent a lot of our workshop time leading up to Parent Teacher Conference Day, preparing for this, and making a slide deck so that the kids would have a nice talking point. They were able to truly sit and reflect on their learning and own it. Even sometimes when maybe there were things that they didn't want to own, they were able to own that, and then we were able to reflect on, well, how can we make it better, and what can we do? And so it was a nice time to sit and talk with them and get some honest reflection, which is such a good life skill to create in our learners. Conference Day was a huge success. Our day was completely full. Our kids were happy, they were proud, they stood up there at the smartboard, and they presented. They were honest, they were reflective. Our parents were thrilled. All of my worry disappeared. We had the most positive reactions from their guardians and the people who came to watch them. Even our admin came and sat in on a few, just to see how it was going, and it went really well. They presented beautifully, and many of them admitted this is the first time they had ever public, been in front of a crowd, right, of three people. But that's where it starts. You have to start somewhere, and we have to create little people who can go do big things in the world. And so they owned it, and they did it, and my partner and I were just so proud. It was truly one of the best conference days I've had. So it was a great success. Following this, about a month later, all of our elementary school at Norton engaged in Exhibition of Learning Day, and we, along with everybody else, are learning and changing and growing this. But I will tell you, I am a parent of a child at Norton and a teacher, and it is one of my favorite days of the year. We had about 800 visitors come in our building that day, which sounds overwhelming, but it was nothing but sheer joy. Our students were able to share with them their slide decks if they were not able to come to Parent Teacher Conference Day. They were able to engage in demonstrating what they're learning through stations, through EL and IM learning stations that we do on a daily basis, giving their parents a nice background for what they do every day, and just how hard some of their learning is, even in the fourth grade. So it was a great activity that really allowed parents to get involved and hear their students, again, own what they do every day. I will say that Conference Day was great, but the Exhibition of Learning Day is truly my favorite day at Norton Elementary. Moving forward, we are excited to continue with student-led conferences. I don't see us stopping now. We loved it. We will continue with our Exhibitions of Learning next year, as well as a school we've already started planning on what we can do better and what we can maybe put even more in the ownership of the kids' hands, and to help our fourth graders, and really all of our kids, K through 5, showcase their learning journey.
So to conclude, I think it's also important to know, this is really something that's taking off nationwide. We just hosted a team from Utah, we've presented at the Kentucky Next Gen Leaders as leading the way there, so many more things, had author visits, people writing books about the work that's being done here. And so I just want to thank the teachers and principals and staff who are really leading the way here. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you so much. You actually answered a lot of the things that I was thinking about, wondering about. The rest of us probably have some questions, though, so let me start with, is Taylor on here?
Yes.
Okay, Taylor. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask concerning this milestone exhibition?
No, just great job. I'll get on my hand, Linda.
Hey, thank you. Well, I'll go back to Cory. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
All righty.
And thank you all for this presentation and the work that goes into exposing this.
James. Gail.
So how are the individual milestones determined?
So I can start, and then Dr. Speaks, you can take it. The milestones in types of the Journey to Success, there was tight and loose. And so the tight was a lot of the structures, the rubrics and routines. The loose was that schools could choose. Do you want to do a student-led conference? Does that make the most sense for that grade level? Does that make the most sense for that teacher? An exhibition of learning, is that something you want to take on school-wide? Or is it a mini-defense where that teacher at a certain grade level could choose, especially as it relates to our high-quality instructional resources? It was choice.
Trish.
Excellent work, very exciting. Now I want to come to Exhibition Day. But no questions. Thank you.
And let me ask Trevon.
Yes, this is great work, but my question actually is going towards the summer. I noticed a lot of students coming back to school, sometimes, I guess, for I noticed a lot of students coming back to school, sometimes I guess forget things. Is there a way, or how does this possibly, or can it track things coming back from the summer? Because I'm liking the conference, I'm just thinking that it might, but just wanted to ask that question, if, is there a way to track milestones from the summer and assist the students to reach them during the summer?
Yeah, we actually have one of our highest levels of engagement with the Summer Success League, and we were able to prioritize the students that needed the most. And as part of the Success League, they not only get literacy and math, but they also get enrichment, where they can add artifacts to their journey to success and complete these as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, so for those who, so when y'all send that information out, or is there a place to where we can probably go and maybe I can send that information out to parents or?
For the Success League? Yes, that's our partnership through Evolve 502. So a lot of that starts getting advertised in the early spring. So a lot of that is finalized now, but there are some spots still open, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you so much.
Well, let me ask a couple of questions. I saw, I noticed 44% of our 10th graders have completed at least one exhibition, one milestone exhibition. Is there a plan for next year to increase the pace? Because I don't think that all of them are going to get it in by the end of the year. So is there any kind of a plan to increase the pace of how these are accomplished?
We actually, we have some updated data, and I think this slide may have shown the updated data as of last Friday, because students are getting their milestones entered really at the school level up until the final day of school. So we're now at 58% for high school, so just in that little bit of time. Because a lot of these milestones have already occurred, they just haven't been entered into the Journey to Success student platform. There are great connections with the Academies of Louisville and all the CTE work that's happening at high school. So just as Dr. Speaks was discussing, that really these students are doing these meaningful milestones all the time, just because this is our first year and we're getting our systems down. It's the recognition of these are milestones and we can acknowledge them as exhibitions of learning and enter them into the system. So we expect this number to go up even this year, and then, of course, we'll have systems in place to ensure that all of our students have those milestone opportunities moving forward next year.
And the students will be a lot more familiar with what's expected of them. You know, one thing I was curious about was how do you do with high schools? They change classes all the time. So how do you, how do you approach the planning of this cross-disciplinary work where they want to have cross-disciplinary exhibitions sometimes, where they've blended their learning in some way? How is, how is that approached in the planning?
So every school has a Journey to Success lead, and then as a part of that, they create a plan around having interdisciplinary connections. So it's not just owned by one person, but in terms of data tracking and keeping everyone on the same pace, there is someone that kind of holds that together for them. And of course, the principal builds in that vision through professional learning. So Journey to Success is really not a thing, it's the medium by which schools are now doing learning. And I think that's a really important shift that we've made. It's not a checkbox, it's really the thing, it's the medium again.
No, yes. I noticed 62% of our middle school, or of our seventh graders, had completed, by the data that I had earlier, had been able to complete those milestone things. We want them to look at career pathways and as a source for these kinds of assignments. But what do we do about the schools, the middle schools that don't have Explore and Explore Program? Do we just rely less on career pathways and more on interdisciplinary work?
So all of this work is really about honoring and celebrating the students' learning journey, and all of our kids at all of our schools have really meaningful learning journey experiences. So as Dr. Greenwell explained, there is a lead at every single school that is there to help manage some of the logistics. Most of our schools had a faculty meeting or some kind of meeting at some point during the year to plan out the milestones for each grade level, to make sure that every student did have access to those milestones. To your point, there are great connections with Explore and the success skills and the career pathways, but even schools and students that are not part of Explore programs are still getting that support and those many different learning opportunities, including cross-curricular opportunities. The mini-defenses and the student-led conferences are not content-specific, and so we see students talking about their full learning journey, not separating it out by subjects or classes or grading periods.
Very good. Can you, can you explain the difference between a student-led conference and the exhibition of learning, because they sound sort of similar?
Yeah. So a student-led, a student-led, student-led conference is when, if I have Parent Teacher Conference Day, I am prepping with that student, my own son did it with his teacher, and he was nervous, but he did it. He came in at Parent Teacher Conference and your parent's in the room, and you're leading your parents through the things that you've learned. So it's not just looking at grades, talking about things that don't matter, it's actually explaining to the people that matter the most to you, your guardians and your family, how you've been able to demonstrate your learning. The exhibition is more of an open night where that school can celebrate all students, where they have a display. So for example, the ones that I went to, there were kids that had created engineering projects, they had made rubber band robots, they had made speeches and poems, and they were reciting that. They had created online digital games that they wanted to showcase, where the families could walk around, the students could explain it. So a little bit different about, here are the things I learned in this particular content, to here is a showcase of all of the things that students have been able to do as a result of the amazing teachers and principals leading the work.
You know, that's, that's so interesting, because I remember years ago when my daughter was in, in middle school, they had exhibition-type nights, and we didn't even have them labeled as anything other than they were, they had done research on something they were interested in, and they were sharing that as an exhibition night. And so it's, it's great to see us include all these great methods of, for kids to demonstrate their learning. And I appreciate so much the experts at this table. Thank you so much for your, your work and your explanations of all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's it for me, Dr. Cole, I mean, Dr. Shaw. I don't know who we're, Dr. Cole is.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Is there a motion to receive the goal monitoring report on interim goals 1.3, fourth-grade milestones, 2.3, seventh-grade milestones, and 3.3, 10th-grade milestones? Ms. Strange, seconded by Ms. Duncan, all in favor. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Greenwell and your team, for that tremendous presentation. At this time, Chief Callahan will play the video statement concerning public participation in meetings.
In accordance with Board Policy 01.421, the Board expects that persons who have signed up to address the Board will limit their remarks to the subjects that they listed at the time they signed up, that their presentation will not include any defamatory or abusive remarks about the subject, and that they will present their remarks in a manner that is consistent with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Also, in accordance with Board Policy, the Board reserves the right to limit, extend, or terminate discussion on any subject. Discussion of personnel matters is not permitted, as state law requires that personnel matters are within the sole authority of the superintendent. The speaker may not initiate charges or complaints against an individual district employee by name or position in order to ensure confidentiality and fairness for the employee. Speakers before the entire Board are not allowed to use props, displays, or any other objects during their remarks. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board and may not share these minutes with any other speaker. At the end of two and a half minutes, a bell will sound once. You will then have 30 seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating that your time is up. The superintendent will look into the speaker's issues, and if necessary, represent the Board in following up or recommend action to the Board. The full Board policy concerning public participation in open meetings is available for viewing on our website and at our sign-in sheet.
George Blasbautista?
Thank you. My name is Jorge Blasbautista, and I'm a senior at Butler Traditional High School. My first choice for a high school was never Butler. I had my eyes set on another school, one with better funding, newer facilities, and more opportunities. But through a simple mix-up on my end during the application process, I ended up here at Butler. But I am glad for that mix-up. What I found at Butler wasn't a newly renovated school, New Field or Endlands funding. What I found was a family of students and staff who knew what it meant to push past limitations. I found a school that builds excellence, not from what it has, but from what it refuses to let hold us back. Time and time again, Butler has proven that they have done more with less. Still, let me be clear. Our success should not come despite a lack of resources. We should not have to keep proving ourselves just to be seen as worthy of investment. During my time at Butler, I may have not used the athletic field as much, but many of my friends have, and I've witnessed the challenges they face due to it. They run, they run on tracks brittle with cracks, risking injuries every time they've practiced. One team has to practice and play at a local park, not because it is ideal, but because it is the only option. Before they begin to play, they have to clean up just to make it, just to make the space usable. Trash, needles, and even contraceptives. No students should have to go through this just to participate in a sport they love. Our baseball team had to take it upon themselves to renovate their own field, and thanks to their efforts, they've not only improved the quality of the playing environment, but have also been able to host more home games and even tournaments. This has booked Butler baseball on map as one of the premier locations to host baseball games. Our other sports deserve this opportunity as well. To quote Dr. Polio, "High-quality athletic facilities provide pride in your school and better student engagement." Butler, along with the other schools that are part of the third phase, should be able to feel that pride too. This project was promised as one that would transform facilities so that our student athletes have the same experience as JCPS athletic fields as they already have at other high schools across the state. When, JCPS is already behind high school, JCPS is, is already behind other schools across our state when it comes to test scores and attendance rates. This decision will now ensure that a handful of schools are also behind others within their own school district as well. While I'm truly honored to be here as, and being recognized as a Gates scholar, the night before my last day of high school, I cannot help but feel a weight on my chest that the underclassmen, staff, and at the school I'm leaving behind. These are not just classmates or teachers. They're the most genuine, supportive, and loyal people I have met these past four years, and they have always been there for me, which is why I'm standing here tonight. To witness this district even consider delaying what is fair and overdue just to, just doesn't sit well with me. No student should face barriers to opportunities simply because of the school they attend. We are asking to stand on level ground, to have the same opportunities that other schools across the district already received. To delay a promise is to turn your back, is to turn your back on the very student who strives every day, despite being told in a hundred subtle ways that they're...
Greetings. My name is Andrea Bolden, a doctoral candidate at Spalding University studying quantum leadership, digital innovation, and artificial intelligence. Today, I am before you not only as your Miss Black Kentucky USA 2025, your Miss Kentucky USA Ambassador 2025, but the proud two-time Miss Jefferson County for Kentucky America, Miss America, Miss American, but more importantly, as a passionate advocate for the future of education. Professionally, I serve in higher education, but my roots are firmly found in the classroom. This is the driving force behind my forthcoming children's book, The Circuit Keepers, designed to introduce K-8 students to vital concepts like AI, ethics, coding through engaging stories featuring diverse and culturally relevant characters. JCPS, as the Commonwealth's largest and most diverse district, has a unique opportunity to lead in preparing all students for the future. Many of your students come from communities underrepresented in tech. The Circuit Keepers is specifically designed to bridge this gap through engaging stories. We help students develop backpack of success skills, critical thinking, collaboration, innovation, and self-direction, while demystifying complex topics like AI and data. As a former preschool teacher and first-generation college student, I know firsthand that early exposure shapes a child's academic trajectory. In my current work at the intersection of policy, innovation, and education, the urgency is clear. Workforce development begins in elementary education. Tonight, I ask you for a partnership to launch the Circuit Keepers Pilot Program in three-to-five Jefferson County public school systems for the 2025-2026 academic school year. I'm seeking district support to identify these pilot, excuse me, pilot sites and integration. Let's work together to make JCPS a state and national leader in equity-aligned, tech-centered education. Thank you for your time and your leadership and belief in limitless potential of our students. One other note, I have some handouts, and I will make sure everyone gets an email copy, but I want to give a special shout-out to Grace James Academy, because I was there yesterday, and it was an honor to share space with such amazing, amazing faculty, staff, and students. So thank you.
I started working for JCPS in 2014. I was an FMD assistant. I always enjoyed what I did and always knew I wanted to work with children for, from an early age. After two years, I resigned so I could return to college and get my bachelor's degree. Afterwards, I earned my bachelor's degree in early childhood education. I ended up with another district and was unhappy and unsatisfied. So in 2021, I returned to JCPS as an instructional assistant to serve a more diverse environment, and because of my bachelor's degree, wages were a little more. However, they don't make ends meet, especially with all the instructional assistance do and endure with students' behavior. We pull small groups and do instructions, we go to lunchroom and do lunchroom duty, we do go to special area and help what's, and do what's asked of us during that time. We get kicked, we get hit, we get slapped, we get cussed at, we get bit and punched, just to name a few of the behaviors. But we, on a daily basis, we support our kids' needs, but most of all, we love these kids, and day in and day out, we let them know that they are cared about and know they are safe with us. Also, some of the instructional assistants work at an AIS school. However, we do not get the AIS stipend, like principals, assistant principals, and teachers. Yet we too are responsible for student learning and student safety, and we are required the same amount of professional development hours. All we are asking for is a fair and level wage. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak with the Board and where's everyone here. My name is Mario Carrillo, head coach for boys soccer at Butler Traditional High School. I'm also a teacher there, I've been there for 17 years. I wouldn't trade a minute of it for anything, just want to throw that in there. I'm here not to bring up some, actually some questions which I have at the end, but some more information hopefully that we can get about the stadium renovation project that's currently going on. We're in phase two already. I've got a couple comments, and I have two questions to end. From a comment standpoint, it was a gut punch when the story broke a few weeks ago that we weren't going to get, or all six schools were not going to get their stadiums when we were supposed to or when we were told we were going to get it. That was a gut punch. It was even worse the next day when I told all 55 of my soccer players that we're not going to get what we were told we're going to get. And having to tell their parents the same thing, that was even tougher. So that was, that was tough to deal with, to have something that you were expecting and not get it. And it's not the first time it's happened. We all have dealt with things in our lives that we expect, and it doesn't happen, and you move on. But this is a totally different scenario, a totally different subject. So I just have two questions for the Board, and maybe we'll get some answers, maybe we won't, I will see. One question is, is how do we get to this point where six schools that were part of Phase Three are not going to get their promised facilities on schedule? Not to say that it won't happen, but as I stand here tonight, I got to be honest with you, I don't have the level of competence I feel I should have that this is going to happen for the six, for the... happen for the six, for the Phase Three schools. It's just what I have. It's a personal opinion. Now, I hope I'm wrong, and I'll eat the biggest plate of crow you've ever seen, but that's kind of how I feel right now about this situation and where is it going to end, which leads me to question two. How do we get beyond this point where we are now and get to where we all are on the same playing field, sorry, don't mean to make a play on words, same playing field, and where it's all equitable? And again, I know this wasn't intentional, I know this was not planned, but it's happened, and we need to figure out a way to get equity throughout all the schools as far as the stadium renovation goes. Thank you for your time.
Slightly more vertically challenged. Okay. Good evening. I'm Amanda Capps. I'm a JCPS parent as well as a homeschool parent. I'm grateful the board will consider approving the policy revisions presented this evening regarding homeschool enrollees as found on page eighteen of the new SP P and G. This newly drafted policy will finally bring the SP P and G into compliance with 704 KAR3307 and into alignment with JCPS core values. So, thank you for your deep consideration of it. I'm here tonight because in early March, my attempt to enroll an incoming ninth-grade homeschooler for the fall was met with denial and a demand for documents and materials that were beyond the scope of the state's requirements. Their reasoning? The SP P and G policy. I immediately started raising concerns regarding the longstanding and discriminatory policy with the district, with SBE, and the KDE. I was bounced between numerous parties, none of which, of whom, were willing to help or to offer intervention against the largest district in the state. No one at JCPS could direct my questions to the appropriate individual. I was connected to the transportation office, the Wellington Elementary front office, numerous disconnected lines at the academics division, and then to a, I can't name, higher office which looked into the issue, but provided no resolution, resources, or further guidance. Nearly two months of phone calls, emails, and constant advocacy resulted in nothing until this new draft language, which I suggested, was caught up and adopted on May ninth. It is unacceptable that the district's internal administrative processes and communications cannot serve to assist parents or other interested stakeholders in voicing concerns or seeking beneficial resolutions with individuals in the position to effect actual change. Therefore, I hope the board will consider listing names and contact information for committee members responsible for drafting policies within the policy manual itself, updating phone directories, and providing direct emails, possibly with hyperlinks, for the individual committee chairs on the website. These small changes will allow for, and in fact, encourage, healthy communication between JCPS and the broader community. Finally, I want to thank a couple of individuals who are both kind and competent. Jennifer Westerfield took quick and immediate action to enroll my student, but this is bigger than just my kid. This is the entire state, and you are the biggest district. Please lead by example and follow the example led by Jonathan Low, who fielded questions, addressed concerns, and drafted the new policy that I encouraged the board to pass this evening. Thank you for your time and everything you do for our kids.
Karen Henderson.
Hello, dear superintendent and honorable board members. My name is Karen Henderson. I'm a teacher and the head girls' track coach and wrestling coach at Butler Traditional High School. I'm here today to ask the board to please finish the school turf and rubberized track renovations at Butler. As a former student athlete and a graduate of Butler in 1986, I ran on that concrete track. It is still concrete to this day, and it is unacceptable for our students, athletes, to have that type of condition to work in. And in 2018, when I became a coach at Butler, the track was in such bad condition that I had to use a tape measure and spray paint just to put lines and markings so that I could train my runners on how to do relay exchanges, hurdles, anything that had to do with running on a track. It just was not feasible. The district did come and smooth out the cracks and re-put more concrete down, but it was done improperly, and it started cracking. It's like a three-to-four inch gap between the field and the track, and most recently, we had a runner fall at practice and break their wrist and elbow because the track is in that bad of conditioning. We spend more time in the trainer's room in between conditioning and our competition season, and it's just not fair for our kids to constantly be in pain. We have suffered hip injuries, we've got stress fractures, shin splints. My runners right now could not hardly run this past weekend because of shin splints so bad. This is a daily problem with us running on concrete throughout the entire season. We're unable to practice in our track spikes, we're unable to train on block starts, which is critical for my sprinters. The conditioning at JCPS schools like Butler that are continuing to practice on concrete puts us significantly behind in our training. And it also is a contributing factor of how we lose a lot of our athletes to these private schools. And not only that, Butler is losing a lot of our key athletes that would come to our school, but because our facilities are so bad, no one wants to come there and run on concrete. So, when we go to other schools like Ballard or PRP and they see the track, my runners come back to me and say, "Why is our school not equitable? Why are we running on concrete? Why are we not getting fixed?" So, my question is, why not Butler? Why are we not getting the opportunity to have facilities that are equitable and an environment that is conducive to being good for our runners and lessen the injuries that they have? I have spent so much money out of my-
Thomas Clem.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Clem. When Googling Jefferson County Public Schools Mission Statement, it reads "to provide relevant, comprehensive, and quality instruction to educate, prepare, and inspire students to learn." Then, Googling the definition of "learn," it reads "gain or acquire knowledge of or skill in something by study, experience, or being taught." Through my K-12 education here at JCPS, I learned using all of these avenues, attending Carter Traditional Elementary School, Johnson Traditional Middle School, and finishing off with Butler Traditional High School, graduating in 2023. Throughout these academic endeavors, I was always an involved student when it came to learning, through classroom education, extracurriculars, academic honor organizations, and lastly, sports. Throughout elementary, middle, and high school, I competed in cross-country, track-and-field, swim, and tennis. All of these sports requiring facilities to train on, but yet, all of these facilities at school grounds lack the integrity needed for athletes to excel and furthermore complete in athletics at a collegiate level. Throughout every class I took within the JCPS system, it was stressed to us, we were pushed in our classes to further our college and career readiness, but it seems like outside of the classroom, this idea is lost. Since graduating Butler Traditional High School, I'm furthering my education at Morehead State University. Recently elected on April 23rd, I have taken the position as student body president within the Morehead State Student Government Association, and furthermore, within this position, I have the opportunity to serve as student regent on the Morehead State Board of Regents. I recently started my regent orientation, and within this have come to the section of hard decisions. They mention decisions such as voting or business issues, but do not forget decisions within the budget, and within this training, it could not be more stressed to me more the reason that I'm here, that is, as a student. A student who strives to represent every and each student within the student body I oversee. With this said tonight, each of you here tonight was voted in as a voice for students that learn within this education system and outside of the classroom, and you have a hard decision to make, a decision to cut essential funding affecting six schools, including my alma mater, or to support the students that your mission statement claims to support day in and day out. The last word I have to leave with you is equity, defined as the quality of being fair and impartial. In short, it means recognizing that individuals may have different circumstances and needs and adjusting treatment accordingly. JCPS lists their athletic mission statement as "teach the basic principles of leadership, competitiveness, fair play, self-discipline, and responsibility for adult living." With this said, we don't want anything special, we just want what everyone else has, a fair playing field, or, in this chance, just a track.
Kim Sealy.
Hi. My name is Kim Sealy, and I've worked as a clerical staff member for JCPS for over twenty-five years. I am currently a school secretary at a school with an enrollment of approximately seventeen-hundred students. After twenty-five years with JCPS, I do not believe that my hourly wage reflects my skill level, work ethic, or education level. There are two critical issues with our current pay scale. First, JCPS has promised us for two school years that they are working on completing a wage assessment to make much-needed changes to the 1A salary schedule. Now, we are being told that due to staffing shortages, there has not been enough time to work on the much-needed changes. I personally am tasked with solving critical building needs and issues daily, such as sub and staffing shortages, and every single day, whether I'm one sub short or ten subs shorts, those classrooms get covered every single day. Even if I have to cover the attendance clerk and work in the front office, I have to cover those classes. The wage assessment is important and should not be put on the back burner due to staffing shortages. We're all short-staffed, and we must continue to rally and finish the work. The second and most important issue is the fact that we cannot keep staff because of what we're paying them. In my seven-and-a-half years at my current school, we have gone through two bookkeepers, six order-receiving clerks, six front-office clerks, three attendance clerks, two records clerks, and four counseling clerks. For those of us that are counting, that's twenty-three clerks in less than eight years. These clerks are on the front lines, they are our community-facing representatives at our schools, the people in the most danger should someone come into our building with ill will, the people answering the doors, answering the phones, taking complaints, being yelled and cursed at by both our parents and students, and they are making fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour. They have no investment in these jobs, but soon as something better comes along, they leave, and I don't blame them. Who wants to work themselves to exhaustion every single day for just over twenty thousand dollars a year? These jobs are some of the most over-stimulating jobs in our building. We go to sleep at night hearing phones, radios, and doorbells ringing in our dreams. When the clerical staff is shorthanded, the people who are there are the ones who pick that up. We do not get paid extra for that. I've gone months on end working two jobs simultaneously. Clerical positions have become more complex over the years and certainly more technical. More and more is expected of us as systems change, and as they change, who are mastering them but your clerical staff? I am by nature a hard worker, I do the best that I can every single day to do all that is needed of me. I love my job, I love my school, I love my administrators.
Good evening, board members. Where are you with me? I'm only used to speaking in front of three people, not sixty. My name is Willie Richardson. I work at the Nutritional Service Center, where we work very diligent each and every day. In fact, we're overworked, not just on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but every day. We're short-staffed, as well as we multitask various jobs just to get it done. We're doing a professional job each and every day. We put a lot of smiles on these kids' faces each and every morning, you know, faces, but at what cost? Once again, overworked, fatigued, burnt out from doing multiple jobs at times. We have more absentees this year alone than we have in the past three years. We deserve and need better wages for us and our families just as well as you want in doing for yourselves. Everyone working together at JCPS makes the difference, and the Nutritional Center is a strong part of that difference. Every job is important and needs to be respected. There is favoritism towards the people that knows the job and has to work just as hard, and for the people that are in process of learning the job, they don't always put them in a position to learn the job, so it makes it harder for those who actually know the job. Thank you.
At this time, Dr. Polio will introduce the recommendation for the approval of the 2025-26 Student Progress Promotion and Graduation Handbook.
Thank you, Dr. Shul. And board members, at this time, we are going to bring you the one and only reading of the JCPS SP P and G, which is the Progression, Promotion, and Graduation Handbooks, which essentially lays out how we grade, give feedback to kids, and those type of things. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Speaks.
Thank you. Long time no see. Tonight, we are here to discuss the SP P and G document that we have reviewed as a committee this school year. So, the purpose of the SP P and G committee is for us to meet annually, and we look over the language to make sure that it's up to date, and we're looking at the current laws that have come out and making sure that the language that was in the document is aligned with that language. We look at federal statutes, regulations, and make sure that it's aligned with JCTA contract and any policies that this board has enacted. We also update the language to reflect the current mission vision and goals of our district, and then we consider and make any changes that are procedural, that would happen at the school level. And lastly, we're looking for coherence with this policy to make sure that the policy, the professional learning, and the communication around that all align. So, that is the purpose of this committee. The committee is a collaborative district committee. We are comprised of JCTA, well, teachers that JCTA identifies, and then also, we have principals and district leaders, and we meet to review and revise the policies and the procedures in the SP P and formerly the ALGF based on the work. And we also have the large committee, and then we have subcommittees based on each level. So, there's an elementary, a middle, and a high school subcommittee. And then, those committee members work toward a long-term goal of shifting our work towards standards and competency-based reporting for student progress. The level subcommittees meet and gather to have input based on the different stakeholder groups, and they review and revise whatever procedures, whatever language is in that particular level's documents in order to be able to make recommendations to the whole group committee about what should happen moving forward. And then, lastly, the committee members conduct a REAP to ensure that the recommendations for changes that are made are equitable to all staff, all students within our district. So, this year, for the recommendations, we have Maddy Shepherd here with us, who are going to discuss the recommendations that we've seen overall this year.
I'm Maddy Shepherd, JCTA president, co-chair of the committee alongside Dr. Speaks. Generally, our recommendations fall into one of three categories: consolidation, clarification, or updating. The first couple here are combining the two documents that we got feedback from stakeholders were difficult to access, hard to read, hard to understand, into one document, making some technical and terminology corrections, both in the interests of clarification and consolidation, as well as adding specific language to make sure that our gifted and talented students are included, and we have instructional language and guidance around that. The same is true for multilingual learners as well. And then, we also updated the language to reflect all of the work that you heard an update on earlier about the journey to success, to make sure that that value and that system is reflected in our policy documents as well. And then, just some updating with alignment K to twelve across all of our elementary, middle, and high school documents. I'll go over the major changes to the elementary- I'll go over the major changes to the elementary versions. First, in the interest of simplification, we eliminated separate grade reporting that was previously present for our traditional schools. Our processes that we've worked with for a number of years have been to reach out to stakeholders and gather feedback, and the feedback from all schools affected was that this would be a positive change that would inspire more clarity. We also added language specific to the gifted and talented primary talent pools for K to 3, and then we changed and updated some standards-based reporting and grading language so that there was more clarity and better understanding, again, based on stakeholder feedback.
And then, as far as the middle school is concerned, they changed the standards-based reporting chart to improve the clarity there. There was some language that wasn't aligned to some of the practices that we see in schools, and so they wanted to make sure that those changes were reflected in the policy. So the middle school subcommittee worked to do that. And then, as Maddy Shepherd said, at high school, they worked to ensure that the journey to success was a graduation requirement. So it legitimizes the work that we do with journey to success to make sure that a student that is graduating has, in fact, completed all of the requirements indicated within the journey to success. So that was specific to high school. So as you can see, in general, most of what happened in all of those subcommittees was basically some language shifts and to make sure that what we had was aligned to either law or policy that has come forth within the last year. There were no major changes to the document, but again, language and making sure that everything was aligned. Any questions?
You have a question?
Mr. Bass?
For with the journey to success, you say all students. This is including Breckenridge, Metro, and...
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It was already our policy for all students to engage in that, or already our practice for all students to engage in that, and now it's in our policy.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the 2025-26 Student Progression, Promotion, and Graduation Handbook? Ms. Duncan, seconded by Mr. Bass, all in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you so very much. Dr. Speaks, Ms. Shepherd, thank you all so very much for your presentation. Dr. Polio will now introduce the recommendation for approval of tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you, Dr. Shul and board members. This is the second part of our budgeting process. So as you remember, in January, we did the draft budget was the last time. This is now required by the end of May to approve a tentative budget, which has more specification than the draft budget. And then, as you will hear, the working budget, which you will approve in September, when we have our tax rates, the tax rate, and all of those things, have enrollment data, all of those things actually gets into the final document. So this is the middle leg of three documents or budgets that you will approve. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Eddie Munz, CFO, to walk you through our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. I appreciate it. Dr. Polio's introduction was a perfect description of my first slide. So the one thing that I would like to point out is the board's Audit and Risk Assessment Advisory Committee reviews each step of the budget process. So we have reviewed this document with RMAC. So where we are in the cycle is, last time I was here, we went over the draft budget, the school enrollment projections, and we went over the school allocation standards. Those are the building blocks that go into what the next process was, which is we gave out the school allocations to the schools and had them decide how they were going to allocate their budget for their own school needs and uses. So the next process is, y'all, I apologize, I'm having some allergy issues. The next process is after this budget, the next phase will be the tax rates, and then we'll go on to the working budget, which will be our final step for the year. So looking at the revenue side of the tentative budget, we are forecasting property tax assessment growth in alignment with their historical trends at about 3.5%. We are forecasting a 6% increase in base SEAC, which is what the legislature has announced, and an increase in transportation. This is providing us actually more SEAC revenues this year than we've had last year or the years before, and will cause our SEAC revenues to increase by more than $20 million in the current year. So the local forecast is for, local economy is forecasted to be pretty stagnant, but remain fairly strong at this point. So what it all boils down to is we remain very heavy on local taxpayers. Thank you. You're welcome. So shifting over to the expense side of the budget, we've undergone a process over the last handful of months. It was a collaborative process and very much appreciated process between superintendent and cabinet, where we tried to, we came up with $99.1 million worth of budget reductions and tried to make sure that they impacted students to the least extent possible. Now, what we have included in the budget is about $30 million worth of racial equity funds. These are SBDM-directed funds that are allocated based on the JCPS Student Needs Index, and they're under the purview of SBDM to determine what each building needs to use to support their student population. We're also supporting mental health practitioners. We have $11.1 million worth of mental health practitioners in our schools. We're maintaining all employee stipends that have been given out to employee groups over the years. All ones that were in place for '24, '25 will remain. We are increasing our support of multilingual learner population by 3.8 million, which is the natural growth of this important population of our students. And we are supporting our AIS and Choice Zone schools through stipends, additional PD, and E3 supports at $20 million. So when you look at our revenues at a 30,000-foot level, what you'll notice is about 2/3, the large green area on the pie chart, that is local revenue. So that highlights the dependence on our local taxpayers. Most of that comes in the form of property taxes, and another large piece is occupational taxes. The larger of the two yellow triangles is state-paid benefits. These are the costs of the employer match on our teacher's retirement system and all employee health insurance. These are paid by the state for our employees. On the expense side, in this case, the large Pac-Man-looking part of the circle is, that is funding directly provided to schools. So those are all funds directly spent within schools. That's apart from utilities. It's apart from a lot of the support services that are required for a school to operate in the lighter green, such as the cost of getting kids to school, the cost of maintaining the schools, things like that. The smallest section on there is the cost of administration and business support, which is 3.3% of the budget, and that's the orange slice. So one thing that is in this tentative budget is that there is a COLA for all employees of 3% that will be rolling out on July 1. This budget does have the $99.1 million worth of budget reductions included as a subtraction in the budget, and after that, we have a difference between revenues and expenses of about $102 million, so a $102 million deficit at the end of the budget. That number doesn't sound very good, but when tracking our budget over the next six years, you'll see that after factoring in the budget reductions in the current year and then an additional $50 million worth of needed budget reductions next year, we flatline at a stable level. That's kind of an image of what we like to call the soft landing after the funding cliff. So as I said, this budget, our goal was to reduce, our goal, which is what I said during the draft budget and during the working budget last year, our goal was $100 million worth of cuts in this year. Our goal was another $50 million of cuts next year, which is a process that will be starting in short order. Then, going forward, we will need to offset budget additions with equal budget reductions and continue to prioritize spending based on direct impact of students. If we do that, we'll be able to secure JCPS finances at levels that maintain the required 2% contingency levels and ensure adequate cash flows for operations. So one thing I want to make sure is clear in this budget is that we have certain challenges that we will have to address in future budgets. One is that we have certain salary schedules that we know need to be reviewed for certain positions. Another is we don't have a current replacement schedule for things that we know we will need a replacement schedule for. One of those is buses. Another one is Chromebooks. Then, facility funding to continue to build new buildings and complete the turf projects, the turf field projects. That is something that will need to be factored into next year's budget considerations. Continued support for what we believe will be continuing to grow multilingual learner population and software products that can reduce some inefficiencies in routing, contracts, and case management. And with that, I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Munz. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for all of the effort that went into reducing the expenditures in order to help us try to balance the budget. Mr. Everett?
Yeah, since I'm new, Dr. Munz, if you could just tell, is the reason for the deficit mainly due to the ESAR funding loss, or was it just overtime, or did expenses just grew larger than the money we brought in? What's the reason for the major deficit at this point?
I got that. So really, it is, it's a phenomenon that almost every district right now is facing across the nation, which was anticipated because of the absolute increase in funding revenue that we had from ESAR funding. So over the course of, from mid-of-year 2020 to about this August, we had an additional $500 million that was provided by the federal government that we are still tapping into and trying to hold on to many of those programs. But unfortunately, as we know, that funding finished in August. We were able to make that $100 million cut because we didn't add a lot of positions, but there is no doubt that our funding, when we talked about increased hours for employees, overtime, additional programming, summer hours for administrators to work, all of these things just were funded with ESAR dollars. So really, coming out of the COVID funding is what really led to this.
One follow-up there, Dr. Polio. I know you've, I mean, I know we've talked about we've done such a good job of only spending money on the things that were like one-time things. That's why I'm wondering, why is there still such a deficit since we knew this cliff was coming? Like, are those, are some of the things we're keeping from the ESAR, and we just want to keep them even though we won't have the ESAR money?
So I'll give an example. We gave, and this is a smaller example, but we gave our assistant principals and counselors 10 additional days in the summer, mostly because of our transportation challenges, so that they could prepare for this, once again, new transit. So this was on this fiscal year, even though we didn't have ESAR funds that we used previously to pay for that. That was several million dollars in additional funding to make sure we were ready for the school year. Lots of things around tutoring that we provided for students. I mean, we dramatically increased our summer learning, things like that. And so it just, you had access to a lot of funds, federal funds, that you could do a whole lot of support that we just can't do anymore. So I think that is really the basis of what we've had to do.
Dr. Shul, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bass?
Thank you. So I'm hearing about the cutting, and, you know, we don't want to hear it, but do we have an idea of what may be getting cut moving forward, and then how can we get ahead of it if we can?
So we'll, and I'll say we, I will be checking out...
We're going to use...
Subbing in. I'll be tapping in a sub for that. But I think our plan would be, at that point, is, which we did successfully this time. So our conversations around what we needed to cut started back last fall...
Okay.
...and really exploring, and we did. Now, most of the stuff that we cut were ESAR additional spending things. That $50 million next time might be a little bit tougher. I'm going to say that, you know, we were able to do the $100 million, I think, without significantly impacting schools, which was our main goal. But this next 50 is going to be a little more challenging, there's no doubt about it. But I know that, starting early, which will probably be around September, you know, collaborating with the rest of cabinet and going through everybody's budget, kind of line item by line item, and saying, is this impacting what we need to do? And then to begin to determine things that may need to come off of there. I won't put it out now, but we've already had a couple discussions that I think we can easily do $25 million right off the top and get that down to about $25 million for the following year. So I think we've already identified several of those things that I think will not be easy to do. I'll never say something's easy to do, but something we can do and move past pretty quickly. So we've got an idea of what that's going to be, but, you know, that final 20 is probably going to be difficult and challenging, but I'm confident we'll find that.
Okay, thank you. And my last question to you, actually, Dr. Polio, is what would you possibly, well, is there anything that we, as all of us, can possibly do? Because as I'm looking, and I keep talking about fundraising, but it seems like we continue to pull, and eventually, the pot's going to be empty. So you in the seat that you're in, what would you possibly recommend us to do as a community, as JCPS?
So what I think needs to happen is, because you are going to face, we have 3% cost-of-living increase for all full-time JCPS employees on July 1. That's built into this budget. So everyone gets a 3% raise. At this point, as we go through next year, we will have to negotiate with our unions and for the employees about what the following would be. From 2011 to about 2019, we went with very little percentage increase for our employees. I mean, probably less, you know, 4%, maybe 5% in a 10-year period. In the past four years, we've done a 14% cost-of-living increase, and so that's still not where it needs to be. So in my mind, what needs to happen is we need to use the $50 million to cut some of the spending that we have while at the same time increasing revenue to pay for our increased revenue for paying our employees. And so what that would mean would be going above the 4%. We have the committee in place to do that right now. I think 2026, this time next year, is the absolute perfect time to do it. I think you could circle this time on the calendar a year from now, and look, and every penny from that increase would go to increasing salaries of our employees, so that we're not digging into our other revenue streams to do that. We are actually using that for programming, student use, and paying our employees raises with the extra additional tax funds.
Ms. Duncan?
The org chart positions that we have added over the last two years, total $13 million, are we, have we offset that increase of $13 million with vacancies, reducing vacancies?
So I'll say that in lots of org chart changes, they have absorbed some vacancies here and there, but we have done some other things that have caused JCPS to grow, like our police officers here in the...
our police officers here in the room, building a police force, items like that cause us to, were additions to the budget.
So that, we added 70 to 75 police officers. I mean, that is the biggest lift of all of it. And the structure of, you know, the officers, the commanding officers above that. So the vast majority of it is that.
Well, and that brings me to my question about how we can look to see if the growth of that department, which is tremendous, has, might help us limit the need for our school safety administrators. We didn't have all these officers when that position was created. But at this point, now we have officers that it almost is, you know, looks like we can do one per school. So at that point, would that be a consideration?
We can certainly review that.
So I would say this, that I would just remind, I think one of the, I do think one of the most powerful things about this plan was the safety administrators. And I think you could talk to principals and they would say that. And from things like threat assessments on a regular basis, we have had such a much more efficient, when a threat assessed, like a social media threat or a phone call comes in, and there is a designated person to work that, that has been a difference maker for our schools. You know, when the drills and the things like that that have to happen, that's been a difference maker, someone who's working on it nonstop. I would be concerned if we walked away from the safety administrator that now is going back on to other administrators. So I think, I believe this, I think one of our great successes of the past five years, this board and this team, has been our safety plan that we developed that balances out having police officers with safety administrators in schools. And so I'm not saying that should not be a consideration or a thought. I would say to the board before doing that, to make sure to talk to principals about how important they are or are not. But I think you're going to hear they're pretty important.
All right. Thank you. Just a thought. I also wanted to ask you about the preschool or early childhood, $16 million. And I'm not sure exactly what the $16 million helps pay for, or how many kids we have in that early childhood program. So what does the 16 million pay for?
This is the, do you have any chance to have the page number?
So we fully fund our preschool now. I mean, there are some other things that we get, I believe, from state. Kim, I don't know if you want to answer this and things like that. But when we lost Head Start in 2018, that was about $14 million worth. So we made a commitment at that time in 2018, when we lost Head Start, that we would not reduce the size of early childhood. So we essentially were picking up 2 to 3 million and combined with the Head Start. Once the Head Start went, we then picked up the entire bill in our general fund. So we are picking up all of the students now without Head Start.
And so that number represents about two-thirds of the total early childhood investment in all of Jefferson County public schools. So when you look at any early childhood center, two-thirds of that is general fund.
Very good. Well, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Ms. Lister?
Thank you. Rough news, yeah. Has there, so one of them mentioned an audit, like a salary audit. Have we done one of those?
We've done several of them. Cynthia, do you want to, can you talk about any of those? I don't know if you can or not, but.
So we have contracted with a company, entered into that contract this year in order to do analysis to be able to compare some of our positions to those positions in the area. We benchmark, we have just finished that process of getting our data into that system to be able to start doing that comparison. The data transfer was longer than expected. It was between finance and HR and the company. We had some bumps along the way, but we just recently finished that and are getting ready to start making those comparisons.
So that'll let us know how salaries in the whole of JCPS compare to similar positions in similar school systems?
It would be in the work field itself. So like, it would say, mechanics, for instance, how does it compare to a similar position in that specific workspace? But it also could compare to other school districts nationwide as well. So it is, are you really looking at those positions that has an equal position or something very similar in the workspace outside of school district?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Strange?
So do we know how much we've saved as a result of the vacancies of bus drivers?
Bus drivers, we have not saved any because they are budgeted at actual field positions. They're not budgeted at a standard, like per school. So we don't have what you would think of as vacancy savings for that employee group.
Okay. So given that, how will that, how will this budget impact that issue of transportation in finally getting the additional bus drivers we need versus the stipends?
Well, the stipends don't provide any bus drivers.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, give stipends versus paying bus drivers.
I mean, I think we have seen a definite uptick in the number of bus drivers when we went to the full $29 an hour. And so that really brought in, now, you know, we can say what's a significant enough number. We're still below, well below that 750 we need. I think the last number we heard was 610?
621.
621 as of this morning. So we've made a lot of progress, about 80 more than we had last year. I think it is a result of that. We are in negotiations with TARC. We will hire as many bus drivers as we have. So there is no cap really on the bus drivers to say, okay, if we had 100 come in tomorrow, we're not going to hire 100 bus drivers, and we would have to make adjustments to the budget. Now, overall, vacancy credit has an enormous impact on the budget. So, you know, that bottom line revenue, or the expenditures over revenue will be a lot smaller with, when it comes to vacancy credits being put into that. So, but not specifically with bus drivers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Crete?
Thank you. I've got a lot. Ms. Callahan, I'm going to put your presentation back on the screen. Eddie, and that last point up there, securing JCPS finances at a levels that achieve at least state minimum 2% contingency balance. Just emphasize the importance of that for us, number one. And then number two, you got a $2 billion school budget, 17,000 employees here. We run our checking accounts then every month. Are we doing what we need to do with this budget to maintain the solvency of this district?
I'll start with the second one. We're doing what we need to do to maintain the solvency of this district with this budget. So the danger for our district at this point is to add back to the budget without equal cuts. If that happens, then we're backsliding and we are not that far from, in the long term, from dipping below that 2% contingency balance. Now, the first question was, what is the significance of that contingency balance? According to state law, that 2% required contingency balance is a level at which the state has to intervene with your budget. So that, what that looks like, I don't know and I don't want to know. But that is within state law, and it's a hard number. And so this budget as presented maintains that level and ensures a smooth, with some continued work next year, a smooth path toward our soft landing.
Are we continuing to maintain the cash flows of the district in such a manner that is prudent for good managers of a district this size?
Yes. Sticking with the plan maintains that. It was my job for 22 years before my current job to monitor this district's cash flows. I know them better than anybody else. And maintaining this, keeping with this budget and the plan for next year keeps this district on solid footing.
How are we managing this on a day-to-day basis as compared to 2019, when Dr. Shaw and I first came on board? Do we have less of a cushion than we did then? Are we still?
I can answer that. We have more of a cushion right now than we did then. 2019, we were going into, we were down to about, I believe, 75 million in reserve. So that is really the baseline where I think we should be. Then going into, Cordelia and I had a whole lot of discussions before COVID about how we were going to cut at that point. Then we had the COVID dollars that completely turned it upside down, to be honest with you, where we had such an influx in revenue. But now, we're kind of going back to the 2019. I mean, we have now ended that period of having these dollars. So we are really going, now, we passed a tax increase since then at several 4%. So we've got 70 or 80 million more dollars than we did then. So I think we're in a much better position than 2019. I just think the big thing moving forward, I think the plan is great. Eddie has worked a fantastic plan. The entire cabinet has worked hard to reduce this. I just think the board's going to have to be very cognizant of additional spending. You know, two years ago, we were in a point, and, you know, it worked out and it was right. So weapons detection, it was the right thing to do. But we will not be in a position now where we could add something that is a $17 million cost to do that, or we would have to cut 17 million for something else. So I think we've got the right plan and we are in better shape than 2019. I would say that 2% contingency is about $50 million for our budget. So I would really consider more like a 4% is where you want to end up landing at 100 million. I think much, anything over 5% to me is too much. We're not, we have too much in reserve for our, you know, let's spend it on our kids.
Given the need that we have.
But we need about a 5% contingency, 4% or 5%, I think is the safe spot to be.
It was first described to me, I think, that our cuts were going to be in the neighborhood of $114 million. That is the number that stands out to me from a prior conversation I've had. We're at 99, I see with the presentation this evening. What's the difference in the $15 million spread?
So the difference is, if you, cabinet came up with about $114 million worth of cuts, but there were other things that we had to add just to maintain the ongoing district operations. One of those, one example of those, is the natural growth of our multilingual learner population. That kind of cued, based on our formula, an additional 3.8 million to support that population. That's one example of that. There were other things where we had budgets that were not right-sized, so to speak. Sorry. That were not right-sized, where we were having to make mid-year budget corrections and things like that, that were, where we had been making the same budget corrections throughout the year. And so we have adjusted those to where they are shored up and more accurate. So the starting point is going to be more accurate going forward, and we won't have to deal with these things in the middle of the year.
And the short of that is, we gave you guys all the cuts, so you could see in the total cuts were 114, and there were about 14 million in things, because we were shooting at for 100 million in the net being the change. But we wanted you to see all the cuts.
I follow you. The prudence of a budget like this anticipating another 50 million next year, tell us why this strategy over a two-year cycle is better than taking our medicine at once this year?
For me, right now, I think is, we are able to do this without cutting positions. And I think at this point in time, it would have been difficult. I think we will be able to do it again next year without cutting positions. But I think there will be some tough conversations that we may have to look at with those. That doesn't mean it's going to happen. And so, you know, the more people, obviously, people we can keep on, especially at schools, the longer we can do that, the better.
I want to speak to two of the concerns that we've heard this evening. One is on the field renovations, Field Three, and the other is on salary schedules for classified staff. The first one on Field Three, just give us like a quick summary of why those are not in this budget. And do we anticipate, even with $50 million in cuts next year, that we might be able to put those in?
So yeah, first and foremost, I mean, it's, you know, we're still sticking to Phase Three. I mean, there was no doubt about that, and we, you know, wanted to get done a year earlier, but it's not going to happen. I mean, the field cost, I don't have the exact number, but it's, I don't want to cite an exact number, but it's much higher than it was when we first announced this plan. The, what it costs to do this work is several million dollars a project higher, would you say?
They were originally budgeted around 2.7 million per year, and now the costs are coming in at about 4.2. And plus, you'll notice on the consent calendar, the 2024 general obligation bonds, there are three stadium projects on that. That is a reflection that when we got into these projects, the timeline is just taking longer through planning and all the way up through completion phase. So there are three projects that we're still working on getting funded.
So I would say too, that I think the avenue to go on is to, so the state allows us to do this now. We've got to work on our bonding, make sure that we can do the things we did on our plan for facilities. But I think there will be that opportunity to bond those last five or six facilities, and it won't impact the bottom line of the general budget.
Remind me, our bonding capacity, what is the total bonding capacity number that we have right now? 750 is the number in the back of my brain?
Oh, more like 220.
Okay, I had the wrong number.
So the bonding capacity is a number that changes every year because you pay off your bonds as you go, and that adds additional bonding capacity onto the back end. And so as you string things out over time, you can make that money last a good while. Now, we already have in the plans and in the schedule to build WB DeVoy's, Grace James, Hudson, and Seneca. And so that, those projects will be extending out, and our bonding capacity will be tight for a little while.
There was a lot of discussion about the overall impact of the 2028 tax increase on our bonding capacity. Have we realized as much increase in our bonding capacity from the 2020 revenue hike?
As we anticipated. So the plan was to allocate 15 million per year for modern facilities, and we've allocated more than that. We partially funded renovations at Central High School and Atherton High School. And then we've done the stadium renovations, the first round of stadium renovations and a lot of playgrounds. So we're ahead, and so we're still maintaining that commitment of the 15 million per year. But we're taking a break because we're that far ahead on facilities projects at this point.
And I would say we've done more since 2020, facilities-wise, than any time in comparable.
Oh, no doubt. And that message cannot be lost.
In our five-year history, it's maybe 68 to 73 was a huge amount of schools being built. But since that time, this has been the biggest five years. So I do think we've realized that. And a lot of that bonding capacity are things that we have, we're already setting aside for these future projects. So I feel very comfortable in what we've done.
The plan on new school construction through 2030 is still on track, even with the budget constraints and challenges that we've had thus far.
I think the only thing you will see is it may have to extend out a few years because of the cost of projects, where before it was a $25 million elementary school, and now it's a $40 million elementary school. And that may change. I mean, that may go down. I'm not optimistic about that, but that could. But right now, I think the only thing that you could, you would possibly see different would be a 2032 finish as opposed to a 2030 finish.
Okay. We're all on the same page in that regard. We anticipate the fields, Stage Three, they're going to get done, just not in this budget cycle next year?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. I don't think the board has spoken authentically yet to the many requests that we've heard from the ASME union about classified salary increases. And if we're passing the budget tonight, I feel that we have an obligation to do that. I do hear from the response to Ms. Lister's questions, that the salary study is in the works and will be done, and it will works and will be done, and it will be in place in anticipation of the negotiations with this union for the following summer.
Correct. We are, the district will be in negotiations for, with the unions throughout the course of this coming year. We'll have that study at that time, that is reference to it. So I think that is the perfect opportunity to look at every single one. I think quite possibly the mistake that's been difficult, that, I don't know if it's a mistake or not, we've addressed certain areas, and I think it needs to be very comprehensive, which means some may get additional and some may not, based upon what we find in that study. And then the district leans back on that. And I think that's what has to happen, and to really base it on that. Now, you know, once again, it's a 14% raise over four years, plus, we're still carrying on the COVID stipends or the hourly stipends.
Without COVID money.
Without COVID money. So that's a big part of it, too.
So we do anticipate having all the data that we need from the study in place for these negotiations to occur over the course of the next year.
Correct.
New contract in the summer of 2026.
Correct.
I'm wholly empathetic to that. I also realize we're having to cut $100 million tonight, and I don't know where that money is going to come from. The community needs to recognize, the multilingual, our ML learners, what's the number now? Is it over 20%?
It's 22,000, so it's closing.
Total enrollment is?
It's closing in on 1 in 4 students.
And it was 6,000 or 7,000 when I started in 2028? That is, those are the needs of this district. Where do we stand on the formation of the Revenue Committee that was on the consent agenda a couple of months ago?
It's approved. We've just got to, and that's a great point, that what I will ask you is that each board member send to me one representative that you would like from your district on the commission on revenue. And then Mattie Shepherd and I are going to finish out with some teachers and us putting on some administrators like we did before. So before I'm done, I would like to have the committee names and selected, so that that really can begin in the fall, is when it really needs to start, because you will want to have some decision made as to what's gonna happen by February or March, so that we can backtrack it to May like we did before, if that's the choice of the board.
With, we've got a lot of work to do. I'm imagining ahead, this meeting next year, what decisions we're going to be making. UC 25 easy, somebody, our next superintendent's gonna have to give us $50 million in cuts. We're gonna have to answer this union and the rest of our workforce. Wild economic conditions in this country that are unpredictable from day to day to day. We need to be seriously looking at our revenue streams going forward. I don't see how we avoid next year without a tax increase on the ballot. I don't see how we can continue to deliver the results that this community demands, given the wildly new needs that Dr. Greenwell is highlighting for us, without something happening in the 2026 election cycle.
I agree.
The last thing is, echoing the comments that Akapolio made about the Police Department, most of the board members, I think there are four new board members since we went through that process. The safety administrators were a key component of it. It has been one of the most successful things that we've done. It did add a significant amount of money into the operating budget. I do support those safety administrators. One of the great successes that I'd love to tell people when I'm not in front of a microphone, but I'll say it here, if you could get Ms. Duncan and Dr. Kolb to agree on safety issues in that safety plan, you achieved something. And I think we did, and it has delivered the results that we needed it to deliver for us, maintaining safe schools, but also in an equitable manner such that our students don't feel like they're policed and can still get the education they need in a safe environment. So I want to maintain the integrity of that vote and the department that we have, and thank you all for the work that you do. Thank you for the extra time, Dr. Shul.
How will children or, how will children feel the impact of this budget the greatest?
I would say, though, our goal was to minimize the impact that they will feel. Now, I absolutely understand that that's impossible when you are employed by a K-12 school district. The, we've heard, we've heard folks speak about the delay in the stadium turf field projects. That's an impact. That's something that will be felt. There are certain programs, certain software, that we have chosen not to renew, that some pockets of students in certain buildings may be using. For the most part, we have tried to minimize what students directly will feel.
And I want to reiterate that about half of these cuts were not, they were one-time expenses that we had to pay in order to get something started, that is not necessarily, it is a cut from the budget. But for instance, the police vehicles that we bought to start, several million dollars worth of, okay, we have them now, we don't need to do that. Large expenses in the startup of curriculum, in, you know, upwards of 14, 15 million dollars, that we don't have to do that again. So a great percentage of this, probably half of it, are just things that were one-time expenditures. So, you know, I think Eddie is right. I think, you know, a couple of the biggest one are some after-school tutoring contracts we have outside, and something like the track being delayed a year are probably the two biggest things that would feel for students.
As it relates to the after-school tutoring contracts, have we thought about creative ways of maybe asking some of our community partners or philanthropists in the rural community to kind of step up and help us cover that gap? We don't, we can't afford to lose any of the academic.
We are gonna ask our foundation to do that with the Mackenzie Scott dollars that we have.
Very good.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mons. Thank you, Dr. Polio.
Sorry about the voice.
Is there a motion to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026? Ms. Lister, seconded by Mr. Craig, all in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you. Dr. Polio will now recommend the approval of a cell phone policy. We don't know which one, but we have one.
We will, we will be very brief on our presentation to you. We presented this last time in depth. You all wanted a little more possibility. We met with our Policy Committee. We really have several options for you here today. I am recommending the one I brought two weeks ago, where it allows the schools to have a little more flexibility. Clearly, none in instructional time. Schools can then decide whether it's hallways or cafeterias after that. We have an option for you that would prohibit this in any place in the school. And I finally, I believe we have one that would allow it during lunch hours. So those are the three options for you today. I think our only thing we're gonna give you is kind of the survey results. We wanted all the board to see that from what the teachers did. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan, so he can talk about those survey results.
Right. So subsequent to the last board meeting, we wanted to kind of get some more information from the school level, so we had two different surveys that were done. You can go to the, oh, I guess I'm supposed to do it. But we focused on middle and high schools as opposed to elementary schools, where the issue really is kind of moot. They'll follow along, the policy is for all three levels, but the challenges are really at middle and high school. And so we did surveys of principals, and then a second survey of staff, parents, and students. So there are three options that were given, and they kind of track with the three versions of the policy that, you know, we've talked about. One would, we asked whether they would support a district policy that would not allow phones during instructional times, but would allow them during lunch and transition times. Option two is support for a policy that would not allow phones during instructional times, but would allow it during lunch, so not during transitional periods, but during lunch. And the third one would be a district policy that would ban cellphone use in the entirety of the school day. And of course, as we talked about, the policy has exceptions for, you know, there are times and also specific students who need access to cell phones, and that's kind of embedded in that. So the survey results are split out, first, the principals, we had 100% participation of principals, and we split it out, high school, middle school, and then those schools that have grade six through 12. At high school, about 55% supported banning it during the entirety of the school day, and then about a third banning it just during instructional time, allowing use during lunch and transitions. In middle school, it was even a stronger support, 75% of banning it for the entirety of the school day, and then 21% supported banning it for instructional time and transition, so allowing it during lunch. And middle and high school, it was kind of inverted, where 50% said they'd like to have it just for instructional time, and then each 25% for the other two options. So overall, high school or middle and high school principals, almost 60% would support a ban for the entirety of the school day, and then, you know, the rest of them were pretty split evenly between the other two choices. The same questions were asked of staff, parents, and students. We had a really strong response from parents, over 5300 parents, 1,000 staff, and about 411 students. Staff members also came out, 60% supporting banning it for the entire day, 25% during instructional time and transitions, and then the balance for, would allow it during lunch and transitions. Parents actually wanted to focus on instructional time, 50% would support a ban just for instructional time, 30% banning it for the entirety of the school day, and the last 20% for option two. And then students, 81% of them went for the more minimal restriction, which is instructional time only, and then the other two options were kind of, you know, modestly done. So that's kind of the result, and then, you know, the recommendation from Dr. Polio is for what was presented to you last time, but of course, there's always an option for you all to make a different choice.
There are three options before us.
I'd like to make a motion to accept option three.
I second the motion. All right. It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor of option three. And just for clarity, option three is the district policy that would ban cellphone use at school all day, including during lunch and transitions.
That's right. And if you're interested in having a hard copy, we have those for you if you'd like. So those can be distributed if you wish.
Thank you. That was just my, I just wanted to clarify that for, so it has been moved by Ms. Lister, seconded by Mr. Bass, all in favor?
Can we ask a question?
Okay. There's another question on the motion?
What option do we give schools for emergency procedures? Or could we put into option three that the schools have the discretion to make emergency procedures?
I think they would have that now.
No, that's in the policy. So it says the policy shall prohibit a student's use of a cell phone during the entirety of the school day, except during an emergency. And then it also provides for those exceptions that we talked about, IEP 504.
Now, does option three provide for the table during lunch, as was explained to us by the principal at Fern Creek?
No, that would be within the parameters of option two.
Okay.
But a school can make a determination if they want to give kids the opportunity to come to an office and check their phone or something of that nature. They could do that. It is just not, they can't have it in the halls or unsupervised.
Okay. So that would be at the prerogative of the school?
Okay.
All right. It's been moved, properly seconded. Are there any other questions on the motion?
Just a quick comment. I can count, and I know that this is gonna pass, and I support it. I just wanted to share a quick story from a conversation I had with a principal today. It seems to be the case that emergency providers would prefer this as well. There's been a lot of concern and pushback from parents about being able to reach their children during emergencies as a concern for an all-day ban. It seems to be the case that first responders would prefer to not have to deal with 500 phone calls, but instead deal with the principal and the safety administrators and the JCPS police who are dealing with those emergency situations as the best way. I'm not an expert on that, but I'm sharing it because it was something that alleviated my concerns about the pushback that we had received thus far.
Do you have a question or just a comment?
I want to share information about the topic at hand.
There's a motion on the floor.
Can I share information about that, too? Just to clarify what option three is, because we discussed it before, that the schools would have the discretion to choose a staff person to be in charge of communicating between parents and kids. So to address that concern that parents are pushing back. There, done.
Yeah. So let me just say that Dr. Nicholas gave a wonderful presentation several weeks ago related to how they organize this process at Fern Creek. I think there is a framework for our principals and all school-based personnel to follow at Fern Creek. Remember, the students have possession of their phones, they're in their backpacks. There's an understanding of how they're supposed to use their devices throughout the school day and hallways in the cafeteria. And I think that we can be confident in the ability of all of our other principals and school-based personnel to make decisions in like fashion, and to encourage best practices in their buildings, and to win the acquiescence of their students and their students' families. I don't believe in most schools, they'll be taking phones. They may have pouches, they may, you know, ask them to place them in their backpack, but, you know, they're not gonna take phones. So in the event of an emergency, the phones will be accessible to those students. Am I misunderstanding that, Mr. Law?
I think that is one of the places where schools can, you know, make choices about how they're gonna implement it. You know, you're setting the high-level ban during the entirety of the school day with certain exceptions, and then they have the, you know, opportunity as a team to figure out all of the details on how they're gonna make that work in their school.
Okay. So the Board of Education, the Jefferson County Board of Education, is leading on a very critical issue of importance related to our young people. There's been a motion, it's been properly seconded. Ms. Duncan?
I had a, I just had a comment here. You know, I've lived through when we banned pagers, I've lived through when we banned cell phones. I mean, I've lived through these things and what it meant. We banned them, we confiscated them, we got into difficulties with them, we suspended. I mean, that was the routine for pagers and cell phones, and that's why our assistant principals came to us and wanted some exemptions for the ban. So I just want to remind everybody that a ban that's poorly enforced is not a ban. Don't fool yourself. It has to be well-enforced for it to be a ban.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. It has been moved, properly seconded, all in favor of adopting option three for the cell phone policy, please indicate by elevating your hand. I see Mr. Everett, Mr. Bass, Ms. Lister, Ms. Strange, Mr. Craig, Mr. Shul. Thank you. Those who are opposed would be Ms. Duncan. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. The eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Law. The eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Law. I was surprised. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Mr. Bass, seconded by Mr. Craig, all in favor. Eyes have it. Is there a motion to receive the planning calendar? Mr. Bass, seconded by Ms. Lister, all in favor. Eyes have it. Thank you. Are there any committee reports? There are none. Are there any board reports? Ms. Duncan?
Well, I just want to mention, I was, I brought these beads with me tonight. I was at Southern.
Mardi Gras.
I had a party, party beads here. They were celebrating Best College Match program that Greg Dawson leads and has led there. And they, those 17 students brought in over a million dollars worth of scholarships for them. They all knew where they were going. And then I just want to tip my hat to WIPAS and the students from across the state who took part in their Louisville Wind Symphony, put on, on an extraordinary concert on Mother's Day. And I, I couldn't have spent better way, or spent Mother's Day a better way than listening to the talent across the state and here in Louisville. So I just want to, you know, tip my hat to Amy Acklin. She was the conductor, and just a phenomenal program.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Bass, seconded by Mr. Craig, all in favor. Eyes have it. Everyone have a good night.